Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a public hearing of City Council, City of Pearland, for Monday, July the 10th, 2017. The purpose of the hearing is a docketed public hearing for community development grant programs and annual allocation. Moving in our agenda to item number three, staff review.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is in accordance with the regulations in HUD in 24 CFR 91.105, which is the citizen participation requirement. And every title of jurisdiction that receives funds from HUD has to put together a citizen participation plan. And we've begun to conduct docketed public hearings in accordance with our planning process each year and present those for council in a public. And today we'll be discussing matters related to the fiscal year 2018 through fiscal year 2022 five-year consolidated plan, and particularly the annual action plan for fiscal year 2018, which is HUD program year 2017. So, as I said, this is going to cover five program years with our five-year consolidated plan process that's in process right now. And the slides we have coming before you will describe the program in general and also provide some specifics about where we are in this year's planning process. Just to give you a little bit of background on the community development block grant program, these funds do come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to jurisdictions that receive the funds in accordance with their entitled jurisdiction status. The city of Pearland became an entitled jurisdiction in 2017. Our population began to see 50,000. Prior to that, we received our funding through Bressoria County as a subrecipient of the county. But for the last 10, 11 years, we've been directly providing these funds to the community in our list of local priorities. Primarily, the funds are used to assist in a variety of different community development, housing, public social services activities. And we have done so for the last 10 years with the allocation we receive from HUD. This is a flexible spending program, and the funding is used to support programs and activity that our jurisdiction deems as priority for the community. This isn't anti-poverty initiative that is rooted in the beginnings of the congressional efforts that took place in the implementation of the Housing Community Development Act of 1974. And we have to use the funds in accordance with HUD and national objectives. Many communities use it to remove slumming of life. We don't have those kinds of conditions in Pearland that would meet the qualifications to use the funds along those lines. And an urgent need would constitute us using funds in a way that would be in response to a hurricane or some type of disaster. We have used funds in accordance with those kinds of activities, but we primarily use the funds to serve basic low-to-moder income activities. We serve individuals and households that are 80% or below the metropolitan statistical area income for Bressoria County or areas that have 40.93% or more low-to-moder income households. The first conditions as far as dealing with households or individuals that we serve, that those individuals or households have to meet the local income limit requirements. And this table describes those income limits based on number of people in a household. And this is for 2017. Each year HUD comes with a revised income limit spreadsheet that gives us the ability to revise or adjust how we serve local individuals. If we are going to use the funds for an area benefit project such as a sidewalk or a waterline installation or drainage or some type of infrastructure improvement project, we'll want to meet the area benefit criteria. And HUD allows us to use their database of income data to produce a map that shows where those areas are in our jurisdiction. And I don't know how good you can see it in your screen, but the areas in yellow are the ones that really depict where we can spend money on those types of projects. The majority of that area is our Old Town side. A little bit of the funding history, we have received to date just over $3 million from HUD for these activities. And our annual allocation is typically somewhere around $320,000, $330,000. This slide shows a table of examples of eligible uses of funds. This is not an exhaustive list, but these are the types of projects and activities that we can use other funds for. The items highlighted in yellow are the ones that have not only been our priorities based on community input involvement and management activities to decide what we recommend for council to approve, but these are also the projects that we have completed in Pearland. We funded Pearland Neighborhood Center in ways that allowed them to disperse subsistence payments for people who are in need of rent and utility assistance. We've completed probably 10,000 linear feet of sidewalk and drains installation throughout the city and supported some of the activities to help the disabled or those in need of mental health services. And we've also recently started to use funds for housing repair and rehabilitation repair. Today's public hearing is really to discuss matters related to our annual allocation plan. We have two major processes in place right now, the development of our five-year consolidated plan and the annual affordable housing assessment and fair housing plan that we do to kind of set forth our long-range priorities for how we spend money in the community. We gather up new information on the local demography, the housing marketplace. We gather information from the community about any impediments to fair housing laws that might be in place. And we also look at our local policies and ordinances to make sure that we're equipped with the opportunity to make changes and recommend new policies locally that keep our fair housing intact. The fiscal year 18 allocation, just to give you a little bit of background, the White House budget did not originally this year include an allocation for the community development block grant program. But a month ago, we did actually receive an allocation notice, so we got a little bit of a surprise there. And we will receive $338,543 for use in fiscal year 18. And our anticipated spending categories are generally the ones that we've used in the past to support local needs, and those include infrastructure improvements. We have money available for housing and community development in the form of our housing repair program and code enforcement activities that take place out of the fire and arson office and health inspections. We do distribute funds to our local service agencies that are doing good work in the community to meet the needs of our citizens. And a portion of funds that we can spend on program administration to make sure that we have staff and resources in place to operate the program within compliance with other regulations. Some of our guiding principles that we try to use when we implement these programs, we do try to use the priorities that the community and our management process result in recommendations for high and medium priority activities. We do try to make sure we are addressing local housing needs. We avoid duplication of services. We try not to give money to two or more agencies doing the same thing. We do have a pretty hefty monitoring and oversight activity that has allowed us over the years to maintain high level of regulatory compliance with HUD rules. And our single audit process typically comes out, it does always come out with an unqualified opinion, so we've never walked away with any findings of concern. The next steps involved in taking us through the process towards obtaining our next year's allocation, the public comment period that we're currently in will exist through July 31st. That does give us, based on the abridged planning process that HUD has allowed us to put in effect this year, considering our late allocation notice, we'll have it open through July 31st, which is a little bit longer than we were required to this year, but we didn't want to give the public ample time to participate in giving us opinions. We will have our substantial completion of the five-year consolidated plan and the affordable housing assessment and fair housing plan done by July 21st. And we do plan to come back to council for input and discussion with that plan on the 24th at the regular meeting on that day. We will conduct another non-docketed public hearing that will allow us to possibly engage citizens a little bit more directly and also give nonprofit agencies in town the opportunity to learn about what the status of our program looks like this year and what the future might look like. And we do plan to come back to council August 7th and request approval of a plan that we're recommending to submit to HUD on the 15th. With that, that ends the public hearing and I pass back the balance to the council.
Okay. I appreciate those comments. Secretary, do we have any citizens requesting permission?
At this point, no.
Okay. Let's move in our agenda then to item number five, which is council and staff discussion. Senator Councilman Carbone, do you have any comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. One question I did have, but I believe was clarified in the write-up, it says, I guess it uses a phrase, we generally, generally result in the issuance of qualified opinions when it's referencing the outside audits and being in compliance. And just to clarify, or can you clarify, have we ever received a non- unqualified audit opinion?
No, sir. We've always received an unqualified.
Okay. All right. And the write-up doesn't talk about the, what, $338,000 that was allocated, so that's new?
Yes, sir. That would be new money that we would receive in October. So this is the period that we go through the planning process to secure the measures to obtain that money.
Okay. So all that additional information we posted for the next hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Number more?
No comment, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Ordno?
No comment.
Little?
No comment.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for modifications, so is there any sensitivity to the schedule in the write-up you talk about? There's been a truncation of when the money's going to get released and when we have to the deadline to have everything applied for?
Yeah, the deadline is typically August the 15th. However, HUD generally will issue some flexibility during times when there's been a continuing resolution, and which is the case now. And we haven't received our allocation notice in the manner that we generally have in the past, which has been during the February, March time period. So they're understanding of the fact that we may have to plan with some flexibility. But the regulatory date is 45 days prior to the end of the year. So we are always looking at August 15th as our deadline submitted to HUD. And as far as the remaining budget process where Congress is concerned, we'll have to keep our eyes on that. But I think the allocation notice is important enough to give us the charge to the plan. But we just always aren't, in this case, we aren't 100% sure of anything. So something could change from now on.
So is there anything on our end we need to be sensitive of as far as the process we're following to make sure that we get the allocation on time? And anything that the applicants need to be aware of to make sure that they're, all their applications are submitted on time?
Yeah, well, I think we're probably going to not be in a position where we accept applications for subrecipient activities. And our recommendation would be that we keep the group of folks that have been approved that wish to move forward in line to receive funds. And once we receive our allocation notice, and once we receive our grant agreement from HUD, maybe we can revisit what we have available for social services and issue requests to the community to have nonprofits submit requests. I just wouldn't want those, well, we didn't have the period of performance that we usually have to be able to go out and solicit for applications. The allocation notice really tells us, one, that we're going to receive funds, and two, this is how much you're going to get. And we use that to determine what we have available to give to local service agencies. We didn't have that this year. And I think it's important for us to be able to give those agencies the opportunity to go through the process of qualifying and receive those funds, want to make sure we're doing the right inspection of their administrative capacity, that we don't pull in agencies that aren't prepared to deliver on the regulatory requirements that this program is compliant with. And just to give you an example, we do have one service agency that applied last year and was approved, but somewhere in the program you realize that they just didn't have the capacity to deliver on it. And I just wanted to recommend that we avoid that for next year since we're still dealing with some unknowns as far as the future of the program.
Number one?
Council will be able to decide that based on what we present.
Thank you.
Second, please, your comments. Number ones, your comments? Okay. One question, Joel, that is, do you have some candidates already sort of, sort of a list that you've prepared over the, since the last year? And I know that you, we were discussing those at a council meeting for approval as we go along, or do you derive most of those from the public hearing process?
The public hearing process and in conjunction with the application process that goes along with that. But because we didn't have that allocation notice in February, March, as we usually do, we decided to forego that application activity.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Council, have any further questions or comment on this item? Hearing none, I will move to item six. So let me adjourn this particular standalone public hearing at 6:16. And our council meeting will start at 6:30, just a few minutes.
Yeah, the waterline.
Yeah, that's a problem. Yeah.
I didn't see condemnation.
And I'm not an engineer.
I could miss something.
The one with Texas.
I don't miss. I don't know. I didn't see condemnation. I didn't see condemnation. I could miss something. You know, I don't think so. I think it was just that, I think what I gathered was Berry Junction box boring and building elevation out anticipating the roadway expansion. And then we just get in there and come to the road on top of the junction. I mean, according to the write-up, it wasn't on the plan. So I would say if it wasn't on the plans for, if it wasn't on the plans, they used the existing plans to develop construction. I can't blame our, I blame our engineers for this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting, City Council, City of Pearland, for July the 10th, 2017. If you please rise, we'll ask Councilmember Carbone to christen this new location of our city council meetings for the foreseeable future.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our police chief, Johnny Spires, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If y'all would bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for another beautiful day. Thank you for all the blessings you've given us. Help us to make the right decisions tonight for the citizens of Pearland. Be with all our first responders that are out there serving and protecting us now. And get us all home safely tonight. It's your name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Texas pledge?
I am under Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the D, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Well, I want to express my appreciation for all of you being over here. You found out where we're hiding out now, don't you? And we'll be here apparently until about first of December, perhaps, as the city hall gets completely reworked. Some of you will probably remember, we did the same thing about 16 years, 17 years ago when Ike, Hurricane Ike hit the Gulf Coast and it blew away the roof off of our city hall, and we had to move out of there for over six, six, almost seven months. So this is a repeat, but not for an entirely different reason. We made the choice this time. Ike didn't make the choice for us. But we're happy to have all of you here. I hope that you were able to locate the position of our council meetings. We will be conducting these in this location for the foreseeable future until about November, December. And we feel like it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for us to get to know where the police station is, get to meet some of the police officers. And if you haven't had a chance to meet our newly appointed police chief, Johnny Spires, I think that you need to have a chance to meet him and some of his senior, two associate chiefs. And we just recently have promoted to replace those, three, five members of our staff were promoted to captains in our Pearland Police Department. So we're still functioning as we normally do in a first-class way. And we're continuing the services we're providing. And not only do we have in this location here the police department, but right at the back, we have Judge Farnie. Judge, would you stand up back there?
But I'm in the back.
Our location is on the first floor.
It's really easy for me to get up here.
And most of her, people who attend her meetings aren't just have joyful faces like you have tonight. But she does a superb job. She has an excellent staff, and we're very proud of what our courts have done over the years for a growing community as we are growing. Let's move in our agenda, which will be the first, and we're christening this particular location with our first agenda. Roll call, of course, is right after the item two of our agenda. If you haven't had a copy, well, there are copies out there available. I'm using the same copy of agenda that you have. We do have on the roll call, all of our city council members are here. And the only change from the last, last month was we do have our new mayor pro temp, Eric Reid. And we have added our seventh council member, Woody Owens. That's the first again, Woody. He's the newest, newer kid on the block for us. So we're all set now for the, for the next, I guess, the last time we added somebody, it was a year ago, we added council member Perez. But when we did our charter, city charter back in 1973, we decided on five council members at that point. So maybe we'll last another several years, so we have to go to another council member. Thank you all for being here. So let's get to work on our agenda here tonight. Item three is citizen to be heard. And I had two citizens received, one to speak on item, new business item number three, and one who wanted to speak on new business item number seven. And we'll address those when we get to that part in our agenda. Moving then under item five, which is our consent agenda. And some of you probably, it would be helpful for you to understand that this was a decision that was placed by the council, placed on our city election. And the citizens approved our consent agenda process by a vote of something like 87 to 92%. And what it does, it takes care of the items that move rather rapidly, don't need an awful lot of discussion like our minutes and a few items of that type. So let's go through this process. We do have A through K items on our agenda tonight. Items removed on this agenda before we proceed?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove item D.
D as in dog?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item D as in dog. Any other items?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove item H as in hotel and K as in kilo.
Okay. Item H and what?
K.
K.
Our consent agenda is A through K, but we're removing for special considerations item D, H, and K. Councilmember Carbone, would you present the consent agenda for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through K with the exclusion of D, H, and K. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor and a discussion on this particular item at this point. Hearing none, we do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Then agenda items A through K with the exception of D, H, and K, approved seven to zero.
Okay. Mr. Carbone, council member, would you present item D for consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2017-132, a resolution awarding a bid to watch guard for the purchase of 50 additional Vista body cameras. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor. Staff, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This item is something that I believe you saw with our supplemental mid-year budget allocations. Would like to, we talked about that in terms of adding the body cams. We've successfully ruled that out for the officers and want to get that into some of the other staff that, you know, that'd be appropriate for that. And Chief Spires is here to, can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Does the council have any question or comment on this item? Councilmember Carbone?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I pulled this because when I was reviewing the quote, it shows the new cameras are at $995 and the warranty's $450, so almost half the cost of a new camera. So have we, I guess, what, a couple of questions. One is what warranty does it come with? And number two, in staff's opinion is that, I mean, that, that seems extremely high for a warranty cost for me, but I do know that officers get in altercations. But now that we've had them, what kind of experience do we have with repairs?
I don't know if we've had any bad experience with repairs yet. You're right, though, anytime a police officer wears something every day, it's going to sustain a little bit of damage, just wear it, tear it, 12-hour days. The warranty, I'm not as familiar with. I can get back to you with answers on that or more of an IT question on how much it costs to actually replace one. Like I said, they go through a lot of wear and tear. I don't think we've had any issues with it yet, but you're talking about something we're going to have long term.
Right. But I guess the way the quote reads, we can, we can buy them new, we can buy 25 new ones for the cost of the warranty we're going to pay. So I just wondered if we've considered that from a staff perspective, does it still make sense to spend, spend the funds on the warranty now, or we just hold those in reserve and buy the new cameras if we need them?
We can check on that, but it is a three-year warranty on those, so no fault. If there's an issue, it's a problem, we turn it in and get a brand-new one. Your point is well taken.
And, I mean, I don't want to delay, delay the rollout, but at the same time, I don't want to spend an extra 22 grand if we don't have to.
It doesn't sound like we, you know, have had the track record to experience what the quote-unquote loss ratio would be on that. So maybe it's a little bit safer to do it that way, but, you know, like you said, it's, we could self-insure by not spending that money and put it aside. So, you know, if we wanted to take that, I don't think we'd be hurt that much either way and see how it rolls out. We just acquire them without the warranty, assuming we can do that on the procurement and at least get that moving and with the understanding that we wouldn't buy that warranty unless we find something new out and we could come back to you or share that back to you.
Would you be wanting us to allow for the allocation sans the warranty and then come back? Or do you want to take a look and see if we can allocate without the warranty and then put it on a subsequent agenda?
I just, I haven't heard anything that says we absolutely have to have that warranty, so maybe just proceed without the warranty, the price minus that. And then if we wanted to come back and ask you to add that back in, and we could do that, you know, that could certainly, probably be this way.
So then I propose we amend the motion to per-
The warranty on that for each one of them?
Is that the three-year warranty on the 50 that you're buying? For three-year period of time? And the cost per unit is what, four?
Four fifty.
Four fifty.
It's $995 per camera.
But, yeah.
I think what Member Carbone was saying is that apparently the way it reads is 450 per unit that we'd be paying, so we'd be paying half again that price, so.
We'd have to have better than a 50% fail rate, complete fail rate on all of them to get our money. So I, where was that, is that all?
There's also a $50 charge per charging station on each one also.
Well, so if you had, say, 10 of them go out over a year or whatever, or two years, then you have no warranty at all.
Right. You'd have to have those set aside.
But you can't go back and buy a warranty after you purchase them at a later date.
I wouldn't think so.
I don't even.
I don't even, I don't think it's that much of a difference to go ahead and buy the warranty just in case, you know, on a three-year period of time because of the cost of the units themselves. And, you know, if you have any problem with any of them and you don't have a warranty on them, then you have no choice but go back and buy them over.
Well, perhaps if we're not unified, maybe, maybe staff can go back and take a look and see about the value of the warranty and provide in a subsequent agenda item, some more information about what we're getting in the warranty that equates to that value. I agree with Councilmember Carbone, it just seems, it seems like a lot, but maybe there's, maybe there's some, maybe these things have a greater fail rate than, and then I would question why we're buying them, but, you know, maybe there's some value in there that we're just not seeing from the bid.
We haven't had them that long, but I have not heard any reports of failures on them or generation. Life expectancy has been on three years.
I hope so.
It's technology, so three years to now, the technology's probably going to reflect the technology.
Is there a need for this to be approved? I mean, is it time-sensitive, or it sounds like we could use some more information?
It's not time-sensitive, we can come in, we can get in pretty quick once we're over.
All right, well, I'll make a motion, we postpone this till the next council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that item? Who would you put a vote on that?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash one thirty-two is postponed to a future agenda.
Information in the record, let's move into item number H on our, Mr. Council, Councilmember Carbone, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R-2017-118, a resolution renewing a unit price service contract for HVAC refrigeration repair and maintenance, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, sir. This is a renewal of an existing contract with Lee Thompson Company. They're responsible for the HVAC repairs and regular maintenance at the recreation center and auditorium. So, we've, obviously, we've gotten through some of the, continue to work through some of the issues there, but do recommend this renewal of the regular maintenance.
Okay, council having a question or comment on that item?
Yes, Mayor.
I pulled the item, I just have some general, uh, general questions.
We've got two different items, basically of the same, they're basically the same item, one on consent agenda, one on new business. It appears as if we've basically got one contract for the rec center at a hundred and twenty thousand and one contract for everything else, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. On its face, it looks weird, so I'd just like a little bit greater explanation as to why that is?
Yes, Councilmember Perez. This item we have here is the final renewal for the maintenance and repairs of the Dectron units at the matatorium. That particular piece of equipment requires certified technicians to be able to work on it. And Lee Thompson has the only certified staff that we can verify in the Houston metro, so we're the only ones that can work on this particular piece of equipment. And it's not the company, it's actually the specific technicians that have to be certified according to the way Dectron's warranty policy.
Okay, so it's, it's a specialty piece of equipment, which would go to, the other thing that I would like us to investigate with respect to this, I presume it was something of that nature, kind of ties into the HVAC issues we're having at this building, which is, we seem to have MEPs that are giving us, um, equipment that doesn't seem to last very long. I mean, the natatorium's not very old, and we've had significant problems with the HVAC system, along with other systems. This building's not very old, and we're already having a significant failure with one of its HVAC systems. I would like to introduce an idea of us at least investigate a standardization of our, and I guess you're smiling because maybe you're thinking about it already?
Yes, sir, that's, we've already started the standardization process a couple of years ago, when the facilities group came into public works. We were asking questions because that is common practice in your wet utilities, that if organizations such as Pearland has a couple of hundred facilities, you standardize around a certain electrical panel, you standardize around your communication system. And we are looking at this for all of the facilities, the vertical construction as well, from plumbing fixtures, HVAC, electrical components, doorknobs. So, we are actually working to standardize everything around our construction as well.
At what point do we look at replacing the equipment at the rec center? Is that after this warranty period?
The warranty period is-
After this maintenance period?
We're currently doing an evaluation. Some staff from Dectron came down to give us a full evaluation, and Mr. Upton was involved with that. We're currently awaiting a report from Dectron to see, you know, should we change technologies? What do we have to do to make this piece of equipment operate as designed? Is there something we're not doing right? Is there something the technicians could do better? We want all those types of answers.
So, because of the specialty nature of this particular piece of equipment, is that, is that the justification for what seems to be a very large increase in all the hourly rates that we're getting on all this? The same company, Lee, voted at ninety-five dollars an hour, this is obviously in fifteen, but was saying in sixteen they'd do a two percent increase to ninety-six, ninety, but they bid on the remaining systems, and that value for them was eighty-eight. And then on the, the percentage on the materials and supplies up to forty thousand, there was zero percent, and it's thirty-five on the Dectron. Are we, are we just expecting because of that specialty or equipment that it's just a lot more expensive for us to maintain?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we are, in the process of standardization, we are looking, as opposed to capital costs, we're looking at total life cycle costs as we look forward to what is the expected life of your widget that you're buying? And if it's twenty years, you know, what is that unit going to cost us from electrical, maintenance, repairs? What history does that widget have in the industry? And can we expect that similar history moving forward?
And then possibly, maybe a look at a rollover cycle for all of the existing facilities? And if you're already thinking about that, I appreciate it. A rollover cycle to get us maybe on a program, a five- or seven-year program, to remove some of these older failing or specialty systems like this one that seems to have been custom-made for this and hard to fix, and rollover something more standardized. I just don't think, we don't have any particularly unique buildings that there is not already facility or already MEP, um, equipment that can handle it, so, thank you very much. Sorry to bother you.
Okay. Does it complete your comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Is there any question or comment at this point on, hey, council? Hearing none, we do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Close your- Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash one one eight was passed seven to zero.
Okay, that information in the record, let's then move to item number K on our consent agenda. Councilmember Carbone, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R-2017-138, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor, staff report.
Thank you, sir. The Bailey Road widening and major drainage project is in the home stretch. We do have a, the scaleless project, fairly minor, change order, and I believe we summarized the other change orders. Mr. Upton can explain the details about this particular one for you.
Mayor and council, this is a change order that's associated with several items. Major one, of course, is our box structure that was discovered underneath Veterans that needs to be lowered so that we can have the appropriate pavement cross-section go across so we can have the longevity as necessary for our new road. And then a couple of minor cleanup items associated with irrigation and preventing freeze protection and half-freeze protection for those irrigation valves, and close that out. This is a project that is a eighty-twenty split with TechDOT, and TechDOT has agreed, so our portion of this, even though it shows for a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, is only twenty percent is the value that will belong to the city. The remaining value will be paid by TechDOT in that portion. So, as City Manager Pearson stated, is that this is a small one, this is about a twenty-two million dollar project, and we've only had six change orders in total. Total encompassing, total value of all change orders is about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for this entire project. And so, it's about half, about one percent. And those are all eighty-twenty splits.
Council, any question or comment on that item?
Thank you, Mayor. Just trying to get my head wrapped around it. I don't really, by the information that's in the packet and the information you provided, I don't think I have an objection to it. I'm just kind of curious as to how the box covers got missed. I think we surveyed the, they surveyed it, and they just looked like manholes, and they measured down, probably, probably too deep for them to see what was underneath it, I would guess. But I would assume that these are part of Junction Box, part of the Coward Creek diversion over to Veterans. So, that's not a very old project. Do the engineers not have access to the plans?
I believe that they had all access to the plans, however, this was a project, I believe it started with the county, but I need to verify that. But then it sat on the shelf for a number of years and then came back. And so, then there was a lot of some, not necessarily redesign, but just updating associated with the project. And so, we've had these very intense discussions associated with this project, with our design engineer and their subs about how they went about discovering and what they interpreted as manhole adjustments versus entire box structures that were underneath there. So, we've been getting their services brought forth to resolve the issue.
Okay, that satisfies my concern. Yeah, it just seems like something that shouldn't have been missed.
Agree.
Thank you.
Complete your report. That information in the record, any further comment or question? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen one thirty-eight was approved seven to zero.
Okay, with that information in the record, of course, that kind of blew my cover for the reason for a consent agenda for items that require minimal or no discussion. So, moving into new business item number one, Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number CUP one seven dash zero 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 seven, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. We also have received from the Planning and Zoning Commission at a recent meeting in June of sixth of this year, considered and detailed this particular request. And after discussion, they did, and there was considerable discussion regarding this particular request, it did, after voting, receive a motion to deny, failed by a vote of two to four, and I entered that into the proceedings tonight. And present this to Councilmember Moore for a discussion. Okay, and if the staff, once the staff gets through here, he'll request on this. Would you present our staff review?
So, as you mentioned, Mayor, this is a second reading. Jomontane McBride will provide an overview for council and the public about the CUP that's being presented here.
Mayor, council, this is a request for a CUP to a car wash in a planned development zone district. The property is currently underdeveloped. The applicant proposes to develop the western half of the site with approximately twenty-nine-hundred square foot wash tunnel and self-service bathroom area. The eastern portion of the site is proposed for another commercial use. Prior, following the first reading, we've had a free development, and we've since learned that the eastern portion of the property will now be in Arby's. Exhibit one shows an aerial map with the subject property highlighted in red.
The Arby's didn't last long down there.
Exhibit two, so, shows the zoning map.
Interesting, I'll come back.
Exhibit three shows the future land use map. Since this is a CUP, we are able to take a look at the site plan, and this is the proposed site plan. Staff has received no comments, no comments in support or opposition to the case required to CUP or new CUP. The UDC lists a series of criteria for previous CUPs, and it requests council and P&amp;Z to look at certain factors. The first factor, does it conform to the comprehensive plan and the future land use map? Is it consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district? Is it compatible and preserves the character integrity of the adjacent neighborhood? Does it generate pedestrian or vehicular traffic or hazards? And does it meet zoning standards? In this case, staff recommend denial for the following reasons. The proposed development proposes two retail uses on the lot. The concentration of these uses are too dense, although the surfaces are worthwhile, the density is the issue. Number two, the proposed development doesn't incorporate roadway adjustments or make the toll traffic flow. And number three, the proposed development is potentially generating vehicular traffic, which could be hazardous. At the P&amp;Z meeting, P&amp;Z recommended denial of the request by a vote of two to four. And once again, this is a second reading of this request. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you so much. Next to you, councilmember Moore, starters.
Thank you, Mayor. I see what the applicant's trying to do, and I have grave concerns over the congestion there and putting so much onto one small little lot there. And I have to agree with P&amp;Z on this. There's just a lot of stuff that's just not right with this, this, this project. So, I probably will not be in favor of this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually went back over there to look at it again. I'm not sure where the applicant is, but I did go back over there and look at it again. It's no bigger than this room. I mean, as far as width is concerned, honestly, how you fit a car wash, a drive-through car wash, that people have to go around, vacuums and an Arby's now? I mean, it's, it's, you're really trying to, you know, squeeze a lot into a very small space. And so, my biggest concern is unless it's, unless I was looking at it wrong and it's facing, like, I'm sure both will be front-facing, facing Broadway instead of facing, yeah, yeah, no, I was looking at it right. I mean, that, it seems almost impossible. And I agree with staff from the standpoint of the congestion that's going to be caused. I mentioned that last time, you know, a couple of council members had made some, some comments to where I was like, you know what, let me go out and actually look at it again and get out of my car and, you know, see how big it is. And, I mean, literally, it, to me, it's no bigger than, you know, width-wise than this room, so my vote is no.
That's what we're going to do, we're going to back down the way there.
I was just looking to get the wi, actual width of it, but I have no comments at this time. No comment, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, my concern, or my, my comments are what they were before. The only, the only reason that we're, we're having any opportunity to discuss this is because there's a car wash on the lot, and a little car wash requires a CUP. But if it was two, the Arby's can go in without, without anybody commenting, and there's an, another- an, and another fast food restaurant can go into it without, without us having an opportunity to car, to comment. And that would actually have a greater traffic load than the car wash. You know, the way I look at it, look, it's dense, people are trying to maximize their value off the land, I get it. It wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be my first preference for the track of land, but I, I just don't, I just don't see a need to be this minute in the, in the development of a car wash. You know, it's not near a neighborhood, it's not in any place where I think it's really going to cause any damage. With respect to traffic, I appreciate staff's comment about traffic, but we have, we have a criteria manual that helps us address that. I am presuming that, one, at this point, they haven't been asked to do a TIA, and I would presume that they would not be asked to do a TIA because they're not generating enough traffic to trigger it, correct? And so the trigger, to the city engineer, our trigger is, is it fifty turning movements on peak hour, or fifty trips per?
That's correct. And usually, as, as with car washes, Councilman Perez, is that their peaks are usually probably around lunchtime and the five o'clock hour, and then on the weekends. So it kind of contradicts a lot of our morning traffic and late afternoon traffic from the traveling public. So associated with that, taking a look further would be the turning movements associated on in the site, what that would be dealing with, site plan, site review, et cetera, things like that.
And I would also say, and that the traffic mitigation procedures that we would want have already in place, they already have cross-access management, which the intent is for, to facilitate traffic across several lots without it being in a through lane. So, you know, is it what I would imagine is the perfect scenario for the piece of land? As a council member, no, but, you know, I just don't see that this is really all that bad a development, and I don't, I don't, I'm not particularly concerned about any, any of the issues that were brought up. We require supermajority, so I don't know if we have enough votes to, for, for my positive vote to carry, but I just don't. I think what will happen is the Arby's will still happen, and then something else with a greater traffic density at peak hour will happen where the car wash goes, is will be the result of the decision. But something will develop there. That's all my comments, Mayor.
Owens?
I don't hear any comment right now.
Okay, has a comment? Okay, thank you. That information on the record, that's, back to Carbone, I'm sorry, I went back to you.
That's all right, Mayor. I was trying to figure out how this passed last reading, six, one. Back when we amended the UDC for car washes, it was because of noise when a car wash, specifically the blow, the exit blowers, were creating essentially a nuisance in some, some adjacent residential. That's, that's why it's on here. I think to kind of Councilman Perez's point, if, if it wouldn't have been, have been in here, they've got to play by all the rules. Our UDC, the, the site plan review, as the engineer stated. So do I have a problem with the use on this lot? No. And when I look at, at value on the ground, if they can play by the rules, which they have to, and they can get two buildings, two businesses, two taxpayers, and nearly double the value, I, I, I struggle with how you say no. Because just because we approve this doesn't mean that they can suddenly build something smaller or build it subpar to anything else that's developed in Shadow Creek. So I guess that's, that's where I'm at, and I don't know if anybody wants to opine as to why they're, they're flip-flopping on their vote. Because if we could have given them a no, it'd save them all the, the cost of being up here again with the engineers and, and designers tonight.
Comments, okay? Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore might want to respond.
It looks like he wants to speak, but she did not fill out one of these forms in the ballot.
I did not, no, I did not. Also, one hour.
Yeah, let me, let me follow up with something, Mayor, if I could, please. Listening to what Councilman Perez and Carbone said, and reading through what it said, what the Planning and Zoning Commission discussions were, I, I would, I would agree with, with that. With the traffic, I, I do think the traffic would be an issue, though. But if we're voting on just the zoning, then I don't know that there's a big issue with it, but where, where and when do we get the traffic addressed if not here? And I know it falls under the TIA requirements, but I, I don't know. I have concerns with, with traffic, but that's not my job to, to decide on traffic.
I would just say, you know, there's just, there's, there's just not enough turning movements there for us to, to make any improvement. I think anything that we would add there, infrastructure-wise, I think the only thing you could add there is a right turn lane, and I think there's some, at least in the professional circles I ride in, there, there's some argument as to whether those are successful or not. With this being a car wash and it being off-peak hour, with respect to anything else that developed there, that's, that's a mitigating factor in and of itself. It's not going to be occupied by something that's going to have early morning or a peak hour morning or pre-peak hour evening traffic movement, so. I think, you know, again, it's not ideal, it's wasn't what I would pick for it, but something's going to develop on that land, and we only have, we elected to have leverage over car washes, that's the only reason we have an opportunity to discuss this here. But we let this go, and it could be something of a greater density with greater traffic, and we wouldn't have anything to say about it.
One, one thing, you mentioned that there were some other things that they didn't comply with, or that this project didn't comply with as far as CUPs go, just generally speaking, correct?
Originally, it was a land use issue, but they since addressed that issue.
Landscaping.
Oh, you didn't fill out one of these forms, I'll cut you a little slack if you talk about one minute. Give your name and address for starters.
Name is Yatapush, I'm the Stantec. Address is five-eighty West Lake Park Boulevard Suite one thousand in Houston, seven-seven-zero-seven-nine. We are the engineers for this project. There are, there are a few, few facts that I would like to address here. One is the circulation that everybody's concerned about. For this site, there's actually three different entrances and exits for the site. The first one, which is the driveway that we show here, the second one is the driveway that, that is a cross-access with the school. And then the third driveway, if you go into the back, you can exit on top of curb. So that's the three accesses, three interesting situations. Second, the, what triggered us to be here is the car wash. Councilmember Perez hit it on the head. If we did not have a car wash, we can have two Chick-fil-A and another use, and that will create a whole lot more traffic and more issues, and we would not have to be here. The third is, we are here for the land use, please keep that in mind. We are complying with the land use that we have, and we're, we want to follow the rules that are in place. We don't want to deviate from it, and we want to make it work. The fourth is the traffic impact study, if you will, for the car wash. It generates forty feet traffic that triggers it, it's only forty car, car traffic count, but what triggers it is that it's actually fifty, and we are at forty. Now, if and when Arby's comes in, that, Arby's is at seventy-one, and that will trigger a TIA, and we'll be more than happy to help with Arby's on that aspect. So we want to be in Portland, we want to build here, we want to be part of Portland, we want to make it better, we don't want to make, we don't want to deteriorate. Thank you.
Appreciate your comment, thank you, sir. Any further comments from council before we move to vote? We had a motion and a second on the floor. Secretary, would you?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Ordinance CUP seventeen-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven is approved six to one.
Moving our agenda, item number two, Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number CUP seventeen-dash-zero-zero-one-zero. So moved.
Second.
We do have motion and a second, we're, we're in discussion. We did receive a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission at the June the twentieth meeting. After considerable discussion, and there were lengthy additional items placed as part of the decision-making process, one of was the reducing overall height of the building, and one, the other in general was to, was to require the increased screening of the loading dock and the, and the disposal areas. Another was a six-foot masonry wall that would, would have to be worked with the local citizenry. External lighting must be located as not to produce the reflections in the boundary, in the areas, you know, the down-looking lighting, what we're talking about. And the proposed location of driveways were a large dent between two jurors, and it was, these were items that were contingent as we went through the process. And after considerable discussion, it was approved by a vote of seven to zero if they met those conditions. And I enter this into the proceedings tonight, and the compass of that is in your pocket. We got from staff report here at this point.
Mayor, Council, this is a request for the approval of a change in zoning in GB, general residence, GC, general commercial. In regards to the site history, the property is currently developed as a gas station and convenience store with an additional retail setting. In a previous CUP for Bell Bonds Business built on this particular property in March of two thousand and eighteen. Exhibit one, once again, is an exhibit of an aerial map showing the subject property outlined in red. Exhibit two is the zoning map. Exhibit three shows the future land use map.
This is item number four.
Number three.
That is changed, no notice of opposition. No change, you did no phone calls and no call or opposition, no response, no one spoke during the JPH for our analysis. In zone changing, there is a land use matrix. So the next few slides will show all of the permitted use should this zone change, change the general commercial. Red text shows permitted uses by rights that are in the GC area to the GC district that were either permitted by CUP or not permitted at all in the GB district. So for instance, you now see feeding, stores are now permitted in the GC district, one with the other uses that are highlighted in red. I'm just going to just flip through the use table. There is also a criteria when approving zone changes and following a certain number of factors that should be considered. First, does it, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map? Whether or not the permitted use is appropriate for the area and the surrounding area? Whether the permitted use is in accordance with existing proposed plans for public schools, streets, water supply, sanitary sewer, and other public services and utilities in the area? And if there are any other factors that affect public health, safety, laws, and general awareness? In this instance, staff did not recommend approval of the request in the zone, and change the zone from GB to GC for the following reasons, although the, the current use is in accordance with the future land use plan. The change in zoning from DB to GC, it's, it was established as part of the GC, it would, it would, it rose the land use protections established in the lower zoning categories and expanded potential uses permitted in the new zoning designation. Two, the proposed, the use proposes, the use, excuse me, uses permitted by the proposal, zone change is not appropriate with the area surrounding. Most of the garden road is single-family.
Jay, are we, I threw in number two to CUP.
Yes, sir.
And then we're talking about the zone change here.
I apologize, I'll go back. This is a request for a CUP to allow for food and service market in the neighborhood service district. The property is currently undeveloped. The applicant proposes to build a thirty-five hundred, approximately thirty-five hundred-square-foot grocery store on approximately five-point-seven acres of land. The neighborhood zoning district allows for a rise in neighborhood scale, retail and service facilities. Exhibit one shows the aerial map. Two shows the zoning map. Three shows the future land use map. Since this is a CUP, we also did a look at the site plan. This is an additional view of the site plan. The first view showed somewhat of the landscaping and all the surrounding areas with, on top of air photography. And then secondly, is another view of the site plan. Staff did not receive any notices in support or in opposition prior to JPH. Staff did receive two phone calls only to inquire about the project, and no one spoke during the, the JPH, and opposition or support of the request. Once again, in approval of a CUP, there are certain criteria to follow. One is it consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map? Is it, this is a proposed, and the intent of the zoning district? Does it preserve the character and the integrity of the development and surrounding neighborhoods? Does it generate vehicular traffic that may cause a hazard? Does it meet the standards of the zoning district? After the JPH, the applicant updated the site plan, and, and, and the tax ordinance in the results, the building height, landscaping, lighting, and driveway issues. Staff recommends approval of the request for CUP to our food store for the following reason. The proposed use meets the, the future land use plan, and the use is consistent with the neighborhood services, whose uses are for the benefit of the adjacent neighborhood. At the regular P&amp;Z meeting, P&amp;Z recommended, recommended approval of, of zone, the CUP by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Reed, do you want to throw up the comments?
Thank you, Mayor, no comment.
No comment.
No comment.
No comment to the, to the site plan, but appreciate staff, it was, it's tough to turn directions on that, and I can understand the, the confusion, so thanks, Jay, I appreciate it. But no comment on the site.
Owens?
No comment.
Okay, councilmember?
No comment, Mayor.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. On the secretary?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little? Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Okay, moving to item number three on our collective agendas. Councilmember Ordno, we do have a couple of speakers, but let me do, let me, before we, a speaker, before we do that, we do have a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission, let me enter that into the record.
I need to make the motion, Mayor. I need to make the motion.
Number three.
We need to, we need to get his start first.
Let me make the motion.
Okay, why don't you make the motion, okay?
Consideration of Possible Action, first reading of ordinance number CUP seventeen dash zero 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 eight, so moved.
Second.
Motion, second, we're in discussion. Let me enter into the record a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission, who at the June twentieth also considered this particular request. And after extensive discussion, which included a positive, a positive view of the facility, with the exceptions and recommended additions, that we have addressed the exterior lighting and not produced direct lum, light across the bounded lines of the property, and also to work with the removal of rear fence providing connections with developer. And after considerable discussion, also, the staff legal advisor said if the adjacent residential property on a decline and working with them on a fence, with the masonry fence and the fence that they have in place, then the fence needs to be developed in a way to reduce potential nuisance. That information presented to us in the form of a motion, they did recommend that the, that the request be approved by a vote of seven to zero, and I entered that into the proceedings tonight. We also have a citizen who would like to speak on this item. I can understand it. Okay.
Staff report first.
Oh, that's Allen Mueller.
That's terrible.
I think he wants to.
Yeah.
Let's do staff report first, staff report.
For the staff report, after you got through the staff report, I'll let you speak. I'd like for you to speak before the staff report, really.
No problem.
Okay.
Alan Mueller representing the applicant, business address forty-two oh one Broadway in Imperial. Just mainly wanted to be here to answer questions and say we will comply with the conditions, but I did want to highlight especially for those of you on the CUP committee right now, that those conditions really are relevant to any neighborhood service property up against any residential neighborhood, and they're really not specifically relevant to the purpose of this specific use permit. So hopefully this is something that gets fixed in the future in the purpose of the committee. But with that, we request your favorable approval and be ready to answer questions.
Good, thank you. Let's move to staff report at this point.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is a request for a CUP to allow for name of the subject property in the neighborhood service district. The first use is a child daycare center. The second use is a gym and health club. The third use is a restaurant, and the fourth use is a studio or party center. The property is currently developed, a single-family home, and the proposed development, development will redevelop the site with a strip center. While many retail-type uses are permitted within the existing neighborhood service district, some identified potential uses may require their approval of a CUP. This CUP will allow potential tenants to occupy the site without having to go through the CUP process individually. Exhibit one, once again, shows the area map. Exhibit two shows the zoning map. Exhibit three shows the future land use map. We also, since this is a CUP, get to see the site plan as well, and this is the proposed site plan. Send everybody out. Prior to JPH, staff did not receive any notices or phone calls and opposition or support of the request, and no one spoke during the JPH meeting and opposition or support of the request. Once again, there is a criteria for the approval of CUP. First, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map? Does the proposed and intent of, does it meet the proposed intent of the zoning district? Does it preserve the character and integrity of the adjacent development and neighborhood? Does it generate vehicles or traffic that may cause a hazard? And does it meet the zoning standards? Staff recommends approval of the request for the following reasons. The proposed plan is located in an intersection designated as minor retail, minor retail node, and retail development should also, also should be considered as a cluster convenience or residential areas, which this plan accomplishes. The proposed use for the strip center requires a CUP or dual incompatible with the residential development and provide, provide a needed neighborhood services to the surrounding community. Number three, the proposed use, the proposed use with limitations on total size and placement appear not to generate any adjacency conflicts. And number four, the proposed use generally meets the minimum requirements of the U P. However, the plan does not show the required screening and site enhancements for storm warning retention. Staff recommends the following conditions of approval. The exterior light should be located so as to not produce direct illumination across the boundary of the property lawn. And the developers should contact each of the adjacent residential property owners in writing to offer the removal of their existing rear fence to provide connection of their side or fence to the developers' basic neighborhood. At the regular meeting for the P M Z, P M Z recommends the question of the request by a pack by a bill of seven to zero. This concludes staff report.
Page your report. Thank you. Okay. If you want to kick in with your comments.
No comments.
No comment.
Perez?
No comment, Mayor.
Owens?
Yeah, I have, just on one, Allen, on the, looks like an entryway off of Kirby. And then you got it off of fifty-nine also. How far is the, since that's a signal intersection, how far is that entrance off of Kirby from that intersection?
I don't know the exact distance, but it lines up with an existing median cut that was built on Kirby.
So they'll be able to come out, turn right or left.
Yes, I think it's channelized, so they'll be able to turn, go northbound and turn left in, and when they exit, they'll have to turn right.
The slip left?
I believe so.
And then you got one, is this where the Curie House is?
Yes, sir. Yes, and then the driveway off of fifty-nine will be far enough west so that it's beyond the end of the median.
All right. So.
Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. On the conditions, the first condition in terms of the exterior lighting, is that not covered in the U D C?
It was proposed for a U D C change, but it didn't approve, wasn't approved.
All right, thank you.
Moore?
I don't think we did that.
Reed?
No comment, Mayor.
No comment, okay. Any further comments from the council or from staff at this point? Okay, we do have motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Ordinance CUP seventeen dash zero 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 eight was approved seven to zero.
Okay, that information in the record, let's move then to item number four. Councilmember Little, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action, first reading of ordinance number two zero 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 M dash one six one, so moved.
Second. Second.
We have motion and a second, we're in discussion. And as in the previous request, we did have a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We at the June the twentieth meeting also discussed in detail this particular request, and after considerable discussion, the commission made a motion to pass and approve a vote of six to one, and I entered that into the proceedings today, tonight. And we also have two individuals who would like to speak before we do the staff report. If I could decipher this, I think one of his name Bruce? That's you. Okay, looks Howard Griffiths, and then Gary Carter.
I'm Bruce, Honorable. At the last meeting, I knew it was a little concerned about parking, visibility of the old cars. Had this by the passes down. Boxes. The red box I drew there, I could add sixty feet by thirty feet, which is eighteen hundred square feet of more additional parking. Whereas the trucks, most of the trucks, that would have enabled six more spots. That would get some trucks directly behind, got directly behind, away from view of the street from five eighteen.
Can I complete your report? There was a tag team, we did just some comments as well. Okay. I think I clarify, may I have to clarify most of that, and I appreciate that.
Mayor.
Okay. Let it be the record, go to staff report at this point.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is the request for the approval of a change in zoning from G B to G C. By history, the property is currently developed as a gas station and convenience store with additional facilities. Bell Bonds Business failed in March of two thousand sixteen. Once again, this exhibit one is the area map. Exhibit two shows you the zoning map. Exhibit three shows the future land use map. Staff received one notice and opposition to the proposed zone change, and no phone calls in support or in opposition of the proposed change. And no one spoke in opposition or support during the JPH. Since this is a zone change, there will be permitted uses in the land used in the U D C. So the next few slides will show the permitted uses if the, the zone changes, changes to G B to G C. So all of the highlighted red text shows was permitted by Wright in the general commercial district that was either permitted by CUP or permitted, not permitted at all in the district. So for instance, ambulance service is now permitted. Automobile school is permitted. Antique shops are permitted. Open market is now permitted. Exhibition hall is now permitted in this zone district. A appliance repairers, appliance repair store, a nightclub, a drive-in theater, main theater. There are also factors considered when approving zone changes, and those four factors include: one, is it in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map? Two, is it appropriate, the permitted use is appropriate, appropriate for the immediate area of the surrounding properties? Three, whether the proposed change is in accordance with existing proposed plans for public schools, streets, water supply, sanitary sewer, and other public services and utilities in the area? And four, or any other factors that might affect a public health and safety, morals, or general welfare. Staff did not recommend approval of the request in changing the zone from G B to G C for the following factors. One, although it is consistent with the future land use map, the change in zoning from G B, from the G B district to a less restricted G C district will allow for more intense commercial, commercial uses and outdoor storage that are not appropriate at the site. Two, the permitted, the uses permitted by proposed change in zoning district classification is not appropriate with the immediate area. Most of Barton Road is zone, single-family residential. Three, Barton Road is a two-lane asphalt car highway with open ditches and was not constructed to handle, handle commercial traffic. Four, the retail lease space within the gas station is designed for commercial uses, and the property is appropriate for the G B use. Site is not built for outdoor storage uses allowed by the change in zoning classifications. At the P M Z meeting, P M Z passed the motion by a bill of six to one. This concludes staff report.
Little, would you pick open your comments if you need?
No comment, Mayor.
Perez?
No comment, Mayor.
Owens?
No comment.
Councilmember Carbone?
No comment, Mayor.
No comment, Mayor.
Okay, let the record reflect that temporarily, Councilmember Reed is absent from the chamber. But will join us a little bit later. Okay, that information in the record, we do have. Well, I don't know of any other comments that the council would like to add at this point. We do have motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Ordinance number two thousand M dash one sixty-one was approved six to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving into our new business item number five, Councilmember Perez, would you put this on the table for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action, first reading of ordinance number two thousand M dash one sixty, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Like in other requests, we do have a motion and a second on here. We do have a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission, who on the June the twentieth meeting did make a, an extensive consideration of this particular request. And the final analysis was that they would approve it by a vote of seven to zero, I entered that into the proceedings tonight. And as staff report, staff report.
Mr. Mayor, can you read the, the council, council? This is your request for a change in zoning from R three to BP two eighty-eight on approximately thirty-seven point forty-four acres of land. The applicant proposes to rezonate the subject property to BP two eighty-eight to match the neighboring properties to the west. The property is currently undeveloped with two existing large detention pods. Most of the properties surrounding the area is vacant, and with the Autumn Lake subdivision, a single-family residential neighborhood in use and city use. Exhibit one shows the area map. Exhibit two shows the zoning map. Exhibit three shows the future land use map. Prior to JPH, staff received, received one, one return in opposition of the request. Staff did not receive any phone calls and support or opposition of the request, and during the JPH, three residents spoke in opposition of the request. Once again, this is a change in zoning, and there's different uses that will now be allowed through the land use matrix if the request be approved, and the table shows the uses that are now permitted. In determining whether the criteria for the U D C approval for the
In determining whether the criteria for the UDC approval for the zone change, there are four factors to consider when determining this. The first factor is whether the comprehensive plan, whether it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan in the future land use map. Whether or not it's appropriate for the immediate areas surrounding it. Whether the proposed uses in accord in accordance with existing plans. And whether or not it affects the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. Staff recommends approval of their request, zone change, and changing from R three to N S, R three and N S to B P two eighty-eight on approximately thirty-seven point forty-four acres for the following reasons. The proposed change in zoning meets the requirements of the future land use plan. However, any commercial development or the proposed development at the site will require additional infrastructure that is not present. The B P two eighty-eight zoning classification is intended to permit large office complexes and retail development on locations with visibility and road access. Two, the use provided by the applicant is permitted by the proposed change in zoning and appropriate in the area of the land to be reclassified. However, the total amount of buildings on the applicant's proposed site plan will require additional access to be provided that is not present. Staff has concerns, concerns that there is potential for this property to increase commercial traffic in the Autumn Lake subdivision. And a portion of the wooden road does not exist, which is adjacent to the site, and existing portion is generally inadequate to handle the additional commercial traffic or provide life-saving access to the development. Wooden road is one of the city's master durable plan. As a major collector road, additionally, water and sanitary sewer will be needed to be extended, will need to be extended to provide service to the develop, develop a portion of the property. At the regular meeting of the P N Z, P N Z recommended approval of their request by a vote of status zero. This concludes staff report.
Councilmember Perez, did you, thought was any comment appropriate at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here? Yeah. So, just so we're on the same page, I think the, I'm going to be in favor of the zone change because it meets our comprehensive plan, but I'm going to be honest with you, the site plan doesn't work. Doesn't work for a lot of reasons. So, because we approved the zone change, doesn't mean this development is allowed to move forward. You've got a lot of work to do as the consultant. You know, you've got to make sure, and staff is going to help you make sure that you don't have any impact with the adjacent property owners. So, don't misread an approval of the zone change as my okay that this development is a quality development for the area. Well, they don't have a connection to me on this point.
Complete your report, Councilmember Moore?
I want to.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine.
He's fine, Mayor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with Councilman Perez. The, I don't necessarily have concern over the zone change, but the, the site, I believe is the only place that B P two eighty-eight is going to back up to residential, or one of them. So, I'd, I'd hope that we're very conscientious of those, the R three development directly to the east. But I'll rely on staff and their current tools to make sure that, that we're not negatively impacting the, the adjacent property owners.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm okay with the zone change. I do have grave concerns of, of that neighborhood behind there, especially that road being used as a cut-through road now. And then with a business going in there, how much more traffic it would put on there and cut through that neighborhood. So, I'm okay with the zone change, but I agree, there's going to be some work that needs to be done.
Ordino?
No comment.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilor Levin, any further comment or questions, or staff wrap-up comments at this point? Good, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Ordinance number two thousand M dash one sixty was passed on its first reading, six to zero, with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay, moving into our agenda, item number six. Councilmember Owens, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration possible action, first reading ordinance number CUP seventeen dash zero 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 nine, so moved.
Second.
Good. We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. And that's surprising, we do have another request from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I tell you, ladies and gentlemen, the Planning and Zoning Commission works with great diligence and a great deal of care with an awful lot of workload. And this is another, one of their products that the chairman has put together for our consideration tonight. At the June the twentieth meeting, they did discuss this particular issue in detail. And after considerable discussion, they did approve the, the request by a vote of five to zero. And I entered that into the proceedings tonight. And starting with Councilmember Owens, we, after, we do our staff report. Start with Councilmember Owens with his future comments as we go later.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is your request for the approval of the CUP located at eighteen twenty-three North Main Street to allow for a liquor and package store in the general commercial zone district. The proposed area is to be located approximately fourteen hundred square foot, suite with existing retail shops. The site includes a drive-through lane and window connection to the proposed suite, but the applicant has not expressed to utilize.
Jesus, his first miracle was turning water into water.
Exhibit one shows the aerial map. Exhibit two shows the zoning map. Exhibit three shows the future land use map. This is the CUP, so we get a little insight. The proposed uses will go in as highlighted in yellow. Prior to JPH, staff did not receive any notices or phone calls. Join the JPH, one resident spoke in opposition of the request. Once again, there's a set of criteria for approval of the CUP. Whether or not it's in accordance with the comprehensive plan in the future land use map. Is it consistent with the general purpose and intent of the zoning district? Does it preserve the character and integrity of the development and surrounding neighborhoods? Does it generate pedestrian vehicle traffic that might be hazardous? And does it meet the standards of the zoning district? Staff recommends approval of the request for a CUP for a liquor and package store for the following reasons. The parcel is bounded by commercial properties to the south and surrounded by general commercial zoning with its size. The location is not at the entrance to a residential neighborhood. The proposed use, the retail use of similar size and intensity to surrounding retail commercial uses. The location is an out parcel of the established shopping center. The applicant has not proposed any modifications to the suite. At the regular P N Z meeting on June nineteenth, P N Z passed the request by a vote of five to two. This concludes staff report.
Okay, we've completed that. Councilmember Owens, would you kick off with your comments?
Be glad to, Mayor. I'm going to vote against this, to be honest with you. Since this has come through on the vote on these package stores, I think that from all indications, the council has already approved four of these. When you go down five eighteen and cross over into Friendswood, there's two more stores down there. When you go down Pearland Parkway, you got a liquor store down there. You've got one further on down on Cullen and also on Main. So, I mean, we've got a total of, look in the community now with what's been approved and what we got. I think we've got either eight or nine package stores in the city. So, I think that's more than plenty. And I will certainly vote against this.
Okay, Councilmember Carbone?
No comment, Mayor.
Moore?
No comment, Mayor.
No comment.
Little?
No comment.
No comment, Mayor.
Okay. Any wrap-up comments from either the council or the staff? We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Ordinance CUP seventeen zero 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 nine was approved five to one with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Moving into our agenda to item number seven. Councilmember Carbone, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading ordinance number fifteen forty, so moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. We do have a citizen who requests, Alan Mueller. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Again, Alan Mueller, business address forty-two oh one, project at Pearland. I know this is annexation, but just wanted to give you an update on a couple of things related to the projects. You know, with the first reading of the zoning ordinance for the P D, there were some conditions from the council in terms of some specificity on the P D and then also on the school district resolution. I wanted to give you some updates on those. So, with regard to the P D, we have exchanged versions of that back and forth. Our consultant did have a conference call with the city staff on Thursday. My understanding is they resolved all of the questions at that point, and they did resubmit today. So, we're expecting that one to be fully resolved and ready for the meeting on the twenty-fourth. With regard to the school district question, our attorney has been taking the lead on that, so I've got some statements from him that I'm just going to read to make sure I get it correct. But we have verbal positive feedback from all interested parties to move all of the land into Alvin I S D. Dr. Gilchrist from Alvin I S D cleared his board wants the entire subdivision in Alvin I S D, and Dr. Kelly was acceptable to that option. The landowner, who was prior resistant, has concurred with that, this, this move. The developer has also concurred, and they will support the move to Alvin I S D. The developer's attorney is in direct contact with Mickey Morris, who is the attorney who is jointly retained by both P I S D and A I S D in this matter. We believe that the school district's use of the same attorney and authorizing that attorney to deal directly with our attorney demonstrates the district's intent to approve this finally. Our attorney has drafted, and the property owner has reviewed the form of petition to be filed, which is the petition to move the property from one district to the other. And this will most likely fall under what's called a minor boundary change under the Texas Education Code. This is the same process that was used in nineteen ninety-six to move this same property out of Alvin into P I S D. This is different than the process that is proposed, that was proposed to Fort Ben I S D, buying Alvin I S D on the shadow-free property. That's what's called a detachment and annexation. Our, that situation was much more complex, and it's based on a different Texas Education Code than our current situation. So, we expect that petition to be signed and submitted by the landowner this week. Due to the summer schedule, this issue has not been formally discussed with the two school boards since they haven't met this summer. But both superintendents have expressed their support and their approval by the boards, I believe is likely. So, actual completion of the change will probably occur sometime later this year. But we trust that the progress and the concurrence of both superintendents, the property owner and the developer evidences the support of all interested parties and will be sufficient for favorable consideration on the final readings on July twenty-fourth. Thank you.
I appreciate your report. Let's move now to staff report at this point.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the first chief city council reading requested on behalf of the property owner for the possible annexation of a two hundred and twelve acre property entitled Massey Ranch located in the city of Pearland, ETJ. Massey Ranch is generally located approximately twenty-nine hundred feet east of F M eleven twenty-eight at the southwest corner of the intersection of McKeever, County Road one hundred, and Harky Road. This site is also the location of a portion of the proposed Massey Oaks plan development. This will also be heard for the second reading on July twenty-fourth. The first exhibit shows Massey Ranch, the property in the two hundred and twelve acres as being proposed to be annexed into the city. The next exhibit shows the boundaries of subject property in the notifications area that other individuals will be notified. The last slide shows the annexation schedule. First one's a notice of intent, followed by the legal notices, followed by two public hearings. Tonight's the first public, or reading of the first ordinance. And then the second ordinance will be heard on July twenty-fourth along with the plan development. This concludes staff report.
Okay. Information in record, let's start with Councilmember Carbone.
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmore?
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Ordno?
No comment.
No comment, Mayor.
No comment, Mayor.
Owens?
No comment.
Okay. That information in record, has anyone found a call for comment from council or staff? None, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Ordinance number fifteen forty was approved six to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Let's move into our agenda to new business item eight. Councilmember Moore, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R two zero one two dash one six eight dash one, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Staff report.
I'm pleased to report, Mayor, this is not a CUP or rezoning. This is a recommendation for amending how your Convention Visitors Bureau Advisory Board is comprised. And looking at the membership, thought it, we've grown enough that we wanted to get some more representation in a broader cross-section from the industry and so forth. So, wanted to bring this to you for your consideration.
Okay. That information in the record, Councilmember Moore, would you start with your comments?
I have no comments. Well, I do have a comment, let me say this. I'm glad that we're able to change this, so appreciate that.
I serve as a non-voting member on the board, so I'm going to abstain.
Little?
No comment.
Councilmember Perez?
No comment, Mayor.
Owens?
No comment.
Okay. Council having further comment, or staff having further comment, wrap-up comments?
No, sir.
Have none. Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Abstain.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twelve dash one sixty-eight dash one was approved five, zero with one abstention, and Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay, moving to new business item number nine. Councilmember Ordno, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration possible action, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash one thirty-four, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. Council was generous enough to entertain a recommendation for a mid-year budget amendment. And this stems from the City Gate Study, which suggested that we equip our firefighters with a secondary bunker gear turnout. This would be a best practice, so when we can afford it, to provide equipment so that equipment can be cleaned more readily, and there's less likelihood for reusing the same equipment after an incident. So, that's what, we were able to secure the quotation quickly and move, move on this for your consideration tonight.
Councilor Levin, question or comment on this item, starting with Councilmember Moore?
I'm glad that we're able to do this.
I'm glad that we're able to do this, to help with the firefighters on this bunker gear, to allow them to have clean gear and not to have to worry about breathing in some of that soot off of that gear. So, glad that we're able to get this done this year.
Councilordno?
No comment.
Councilmember Little?
Was this the low bid on this project?
I think we took what was off a bid sheet we previously kept, or Bob's got that, okay. It's going to take you a long time to walk that way.
This pricing is available through the TASB buy board contract, which is a cooperative. It exempts the city from competitive bidding. The pricing is comparable with what we bought bunker gear previously in January of sixteen was the last purchase. The coat is approximately three point nine percent increase, which I think is acceptable. The pant is approximately four point one percent increase. The glove is about a twenty percent increase, and I think that is because fire department has recognized and identified an upgrade from the glove that they previously used. It's a different model. Vance, if you are Kelly, is that factual on the glove? The rest is factual, but I'm not sure about the glove.
Yeah, so the change in the glove is the previous model we used, this continues, and this is the new model that we're going to use.
Thank you.
So, Chief Riley or whomever, so this will give us secondary, secondary PPE for all of our current firefighters and volunteers?
That makes sense.
That is correct. This provides a second set of gear for all of our operational staff, the ones that are using this gear day in and day out at the field level and station level.
Full-time and volunteer?
Correct.
Okay. And so, from now on, as we staff up, if we add firefighters, the policy will be that they, we buy two sets of gear for every new additional, or new employee?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councilmember Owens?
No comment. No comment?
Councilwoman Carbone? Any wrap-up comments?
No, Mayor.
Any council or staff wrap-up comments at this point? Hearing none. Mr. Secretary, we do have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash one thirty-four is approved six to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Councilmember Little, would you present item number ten?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration of Possible Action, Resolution number R twenty seventeen dash seven six, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
So, this item is for our regular maintenance at various city facilities. We do have a open contract with Raven. We provided a estimated expenditure, but I need to extend that amount, and for the term of that, as noted, for one hundred twenty-five thousand for the upcoming year.
Okay. Staff report. Dr. Way or Councilmember Little, what is your comments?
Mayor, I think we covered this under the earlier ATAC contracts. I have no comment.
Okay. Councilmember Perez?
No additional comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Owens?
No comment.
Councilmember Carbone? Any further comment from council or from staff? Hearing none. We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash seventy-six was approved six to zero with Councilmember Reed absent from the chambers.
Okay. Moving into our agenda to item number five, major five. Are there any mayor council issue for future council agendas? Future council agenda items. I don't hear any.
Yeah, we do.
Moving of the business, we do have an executive session under government code section five five one point zero seven one, seven two, consultation with city attorney regarding the purchase, exchange, or lease of property for city facilities, and section five five one point zero eight seven, consultation with the city attorney regarding economic development negotiations. Obviously, we can discuss these items with staff and other individuals appropriately in our exec session, but we can't make a decision in the executive session. But upon return to open session, we will have new business items one and two available for council consideration on my return. We are recessing into executive session at eight oh nine.
Obviously, no action, so.
It's a slow night, Bob.
Yeah. The hell is this?
I mean, you've stayed for a lot of these, and you know what's normally happening. It might be a little anticlimactic.
I'd say.
Do you have corn?
Uh, yes, ma'am. For sure.
Council has returned from executive session at nine fifty-five. Moving to the results of our discussion in executive session, I believe the council will take no action on these items at this point. There being no further business for the city council, we are adjourned at nine fifty-six.